We do have a call. But we'll do the roll call. And then I'll read.
Want to state first that he's participating because you do have a call on the mayor due to illness is participating electronic attendant?
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
We can't hear. We need to.
And I was going to say it looks like their air pod is from the mayor.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay. Do they have to take a consensus before I'm allowed in or can I just start the meeting?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you will allow me to make the announcement. Okay, that's okay. We do have a call. Okay. For the record. Mayor Rudes has requested to attend and chair this meeting electronically. Because of surgery? Okay. Or there.
So you walk him down, make a motion. Second, you know, you allow him to participate electronically due to.
Allow you can now take a vote to allow him to or not allow him to participate electronically due to the medical.
So move, motion to let the mayor. Second.
So my question would be. So my only question would be is that um he would he would still chair the meeting electronically? And if it doesn't pass, we would have to appoint a mayor pro tem, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So for the record, I'm going to do the roll call.
Did you get a favor?
Yes. Trusty Lewis.
Both side.
Trusty Williams.
Both side.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell. Trusty Foulter. Trusty Thompson.
Both side.
Trusty Brooks.
Upstanding.
Okay. Motion here, Mr. Mayor. Now I'll do the roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Can you hear?
I can't hear the clerk at all.
Oh, you can't?
Okay, can you hear, Madam Clerk is about to call the roll call for the meeting.
Okay, so since the board has approved me, the majority of the board has approved me, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'm asking the clerk for a roll call, please. Madam Clerk. Thank the board for the majority of the board for approving me. I'd like to call this meeting to order, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trusty Lewis.
Present.
Trusty Williams.
Here.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trusty Foulter. Trusty Thompson.
Present.
Trusty Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudes.
I'm here, Madam Clerk. Can we please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes, please?
Mr. Mayor, could we table?
Yeah. I know you can't see me, Mayor, but Trusty Brooks actually to be recognized. Mayor.
Can you hear, Mayor, that Trusty Brooks is asking to be recognized?
Yeah, yes, Trusty Brooks, yes. It's kind of a delay when you guys speak.
Okay, uh, if I can motion to table the minutes, please.
All right, is there a second to Trusty Brooks' motion to table the minutes? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk, Trusty Brooks made the motion. I can't understand who made the second.
Trusty Thompson.
Trusty Thompson made the second. Roll call, please, Madam.
Trusty Lu. Trusty Lewis.
Both side, to table the minutes.
Trusty Williams.
Both side.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell.
Both side.
Trusty Foulter.
Both side.
Trusty Thompson. Trusty Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Rudes.
Both side, Madam Clerk, to table. Item F1, there is no unfinished business. New business agenda, item F2A. Acceptance of the.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, you have public comment? Right. The general public comment?
Well, agenda items only.
According to the agenda, it's not to item G.
Oh, I have a different one.
Right, I don't know, we've got the G, but this is for agenda items only, but no one.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm sorry, we do have one for agenda items only. We do have one public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Is it regarding the agenda item? Please proceed.
Ms. Millie Morgan. Ms. Millie Morgan.
You have comments relative to agenda items.
Talking about the various item 2A or 2B. Since there are no public comments for the items on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Millie is at the podium.
Okay. So the items on the agenda are acceptance of the planning commission's recommendation for Altech's petition for variance.
Good evening, everybody. I guess I'm not understanding what this is all about. What this, what the two items are that's on the agenda. So I have questions and thoughts in my mind, but I'm not clear about what this means. It's kind of difficult, I think, at the beginning of the meetings to to have questions, good legitimate questions, when you don't know what this is all about. Because, and the reason why I'm asking for clarity is because I've been talking with Commissioner Dolch, David Dolch, who is the commissioner of Moni Township.
Excuse me, Ms. Morgan, David Dolch, if the questions aren't related to item 2A or 2B, your public comment should be reserved for the latter part of the meeting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you through that. I'm sorry, I can't hear you through the contraption.
If the questions aren't related to items 2A or item 2B, the public comments will be in the rear.
You say it would be in the rear.
Yeah, the public comments will be in the rear if the questions you're going to ask aren't related to item F2A or F2B. That's a general public comment.
Um, I guess I'll have to uh hold my comments for later because um I think I just got kind of excited when I saw Hamilton, Hamilton Avenue. And that's something that I want to talk about pertaining to Hamilton slash Hickok Road.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your concern. I'll be glad to hear your comments at the item, item G.
There's no one else, Mayor.
I can't hear Mrs. Morgan's questions. Thank you so much.
There's no one else to comment.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Item F2A, acceptance of the planning commission's recommendation for Altech's petition for variance. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move by Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, questions?
Question. So from my understanding, is this a variance for a repair service? Or, I don't understand what it's for.
This is the. This is a recommendation from the from the planning commission for the annexation of land into the Village of University Park.
This says it's to allow a variance to allow Altech to run a maintenance center for the service, repair, and maintenance of hydraulic, electrical, and mechanical systems on specialized cranes. Where does it say annex the land into the village? I don't see that part. Somebody show me.
Is someone here from Altech? Okay.
So Mayor, someone stepping up. There's someone that's here from Altech and they're stepping up to speak.
Okay, great, great.
Am I on? Hey, I'm Daniel Deloach, I'm in-house counsel with Altech.
I'm sorry.
My name is Daniel Deloach, I'm in-house counsel with Altech.
Could you spell your last name because I can barely understand.
Deloach, D-E-L-O-A-C-H. Uh, we are not seeking annexation. We're seeking a, I believe, authorized variance.
So the agenda is incorrect because it's. Does it say that? Oh, no, that's another company. Okay, petition for variance. Explain exactly what you propose to be business you propose to be conducting there?
Sure, I can tell you. We, so it's a service and maintenance facility for the fancy words of the hydraulic equipment. What Altech does, they manufacture mobile industrial equipment. You'll see it, the boom trucks that work on power lines. They also do cranes and digger derricks. This is not a manufacturing facility. This is a service and repair facility for those units after they're sold to customers.
So I guess the question that would be initially, this was zoned for something else and this is what you petitioned for? And I'll tell you why we probably just a little bit lost. We in a summer session and usually when we in a summer session, something like this normally would come before the committee of the whole where you would explain, but we wouldn't vote until like this meeting. So we just got this over the weekend. So we kind of a little lost a little bit of, was it the variance of you had, it was a permit of that you were doing to fix maintenance in a certain area industrial park or something? We're just trying to get a clarification of what are we exactly about to vote for? Like, what's the difference or contrast, the difference between A and B?
Between A and B?
Meaning that if you were, if originally you all were not there or you just moved in there, something because we're not, we're just receiving this from the planning commission. We just got this on what, Thursday, Sunday? Sunday. So we just want to make sure what is exactly we're voting for, for the residents of University Park for this variance.
Sure. So we are under contract to purchase the subject site at 2418 Bond Street. We've had a pre-application meeting with the Village of University Park several months ago. At the beginning of July, we had the planning commission meeting. The, our use was interpreted by the Village of University Park to not fall within a permitted use. But, you know, it's at least arguably closely similar there to permitted uses. It's certainly not very close to a special use or a prohibited use. And so the guidance was that we needed to apply for a authorized variance to get our use approved.
So just pretty much in summary of business, that in that particular zone, you needed a special permit in order to operate the equipment that you were explaining with the hydraulics? Is that's what it was?
Uh, yes, sir. The list of permitted uses in the Village of University Park code, our proposed use was interpreted to not fall within the list of permitted uses.
Okay.
And some of those uses are, uh, two in particular. One is garages, public, storage, repair, and servicing of motor vehicles. That's 1260-036. And then 1260-039 allows for the manufacturing, fabricating, processing, producing, cleaning, testing, repair, transfer, or storage of materials, goods, and products.
Yeah, so it's actually, I don't know if the commissioner's seen it. Well, I think I found at least the recommendation on the last page where he. Yeah. Where it's, where they signed off and CC'd the mayor. No construction, including earthwork, underground surface, surface improvement unless until the final purchase provided by the Village of University Park, no construction. You want to table?
Are we able to table this because I'm concerned about having another repair facility for more discussion? I would like to go out and make a motion. I make a motion to table approval of the acceptance of the planning commission's recommendation for Altech's petition for variance.
Did you hear, Mayor?
Is that Trusty Thompson that's asking for a motion to table? And may I ask, and it's a second by Brooks? I, that's fine and banded, but I would encourage to pass this items because time is of the essence. These people have done their due diligence through the planning commission, and that's what the planning commission is for, to give their recommendation. So there's a motion, there's a motion in the second, so do the roll call, Madam Clerk. And just take it from there.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
I prefer for it not to be tabled, to be honest with you.
May I be recognized? Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Trusty Brooks.
Yes, sir. Oh. Yeah, we can cut off. I just want to just let them know we didn't, we just got it, so. Right, I agree.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. I really prefer for this to move forward, but the board has the decision.
Trusty Lewis, both know. Trusty Williams.
Both know the table because of the plan commission's recommendation.
Trusty Foulter.
Both, yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, yes?
Yes. Trusty Thompson.
Both side.
Trusty Brooks.
Both side, we just got this on Friday.
Trusty.
Sunday, I'm sorry.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell. This is the motion to table. You pass, so I'm coming back to you.
Both sides table.
Mayor Ruiz.
Both know the table.
Motion to table is approved.
Okay, so. Are we finished with that item?
Yes, sir.
Item F2B. An audit authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the Village of University Park and Western Rivers UP slash LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Company for two vacant lots parcels located on Hamilton Avenue, University Park. Is there a motion?
Sure, what this parcel is. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We'll need a second to proceed.
Second.
This is bringing land that was an uncorporated area into the village boundaries of the Village of University Park, expanding our footprint as a municipality. Annexations are really good things.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
This is for authorizing an annexation agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Is someone here?
It says Reston Rivers UP LLC.
There's someone stepping up to the podium there.
Somebody to the podium, thank you.
How are you? Good evening. Tim Hayes, owner of Western Rivers.
Tim, can you give them, give the residents and the board an explanation of what this, the annexation of what your company does?
Well. Can I answer that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's vacant property that's zoned ag right now, so I wanted to annex it into the village. I've done some other parcels within the village, so I want to be able to develop it. That's the reason.
Can you give us an? He said he want to annex two vacant parcels. But my question is, what are you gonna, when you develop them, what are you gonna develop? What are you gonna do?
Well, we need some outside storage, mostly for construction for fiber optic company.
He said storage?
Storage, outside storage, cable reels, fiber optics, things of that nature, some equipment.
Do you have a written development plan? That you can share with the board?
I don't have a development plan, no. But I think we've gone through most of this stuff over the last two years.
I don't know anything about it. This is my first time doing so.
Mayor Ruiz, Trusty Brooks.
Yes, sir.
Were you aware of the plan or is this something that came before the cow or something? I mean, I don't mean to sound repetitive about this. The trustees are just a little lost because you know, we didn't have a cow, so you kind of have to express the, some of the confusion on the faces. I mean, we want to take some action if it's definitely dealing with business, but also on the same time, we just little lost, we just want to have like a clear picture in our head. If you understand.
This sound is horrible.
It's, he can't hear me. How about now, Mayor?
Yeah, what's your question, Brooks?
Yes, sir. Oh, there we go. Can you hear me, Mayor? Yeah, so, so Mayor, the question that came in. The question, the question that came in was that, was that, it's the mic. The question that came in is that can you give us some type of site a clarity? And the only reason why I'm saying that is because we normally don't have the cow during July and June, so we were just asking if, is this a project that you are very familiar with that probably can use a little more explanation than what a presenter have? Because we are just a little lost, we just only got this on Sunday.
Did you hear, Trusty Brooks?
Yeah, but Trusty, it's a very simple process of annexation. Of bringing additional property into the community, adding to our tax base for potential growth and development. And that's what it's all about. And I know that we did not have the cow, but I gave you guys the credit as being smart businessmen or the people to continue to move the community forward even in its off-season to continue moving forward. It's an annexation. Most communities are landlocked. We have the opportunity to expand our borders for future growth. And when there's a landowner that's willing to come into the community of University Park, we should be, I would think we will be good stewards and recipients and have a vision of how the future would scope out. It would go way beyond our ears, I'll put it that way.
It's nice to have a vision, Mayor, but I'm just saying, can you articulate it more of the project and more about us being good stewards? And that's not being sarcastic, I'm saying that he says it's going to be more of a warehouse. Most, most, most of the times, we have someone in here that has a picture, a diagram, or you all would even give us a map. We don't even have a map in front of us of what we annexing. So that's, that's where I'm going with this, Mayor, it's not to be sarcastic, not to cau-, cause conflicts, but some of my colleagues are a little confused of what we're doing, and we don't mind saying yes, we have said yes, I've said yes, to at least ninety-five percent of your projects. I'm just saying that can we get a clear vision of what is it, the area, the street, what it would look like? And if you haven't seen it, I mean, you just haven't seen it, but we just want a little better articulation of it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Brooks, I'm sorry.
We're just asking for just a little articulation of what street, what, what spot, it don't.
Hamilton, Hamilton Road, Hamilton Avenue. Two vacant parcels that we, that are right on our borders, that are contiguous, that gives us the opportunity to annex in, and that we're not getting anything for as we speak now, but here's an opportunity for us to get more growth and potentially tax dollars. So it's, it's, it's a board decision, it's a business decision, and sometimes we have, and, and you guys as legislators have to make legislative things, thinking outside the box and just doing what's best for the future growth for the community. But I under, I understand.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Oh, go ahead.
Go, go right ahead.
Okay, so what I understand is.
No, I've, I've never met them before, so, but I'm, I'm always a businessman for the people.
I think trustee Williams had a question.
Okay, trustee Williams?
Okay, I was trying to get clarity, it's vacant land there now, nothing on it. You want to bring in a storage area for fiber optics and things along that line, cable and what have you. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, did this need to go to the planning commission to get approval, or, or not, Mayor?
No, this, this annexation, this one didn't have to. Cause they want, the planning commission only comes in when it's just a special use or variance.
Okay, so what are you going to do different, sir, if you come back again, put it on a PowerPoint, show us Hamilton, and show us a square that's going to be a storage space? I guess I'm trying to get some understanding. He has explained what it's for, so when we get the PowerPoint, he's going to show us a diagram of where it's going to be. It's going to be a square there, and he's going to tell us pretty much the same thing. I guess I don't know what else we need to know. If it's going to bring growth, revenue, and development, and we just got plain land there, we're not getting nothing, and we can get something from it, and it's nothing harmful or dangerous. I guess, you know, I'm trying to see what's the pushback, what, you know, what else is he going to tell us? What else? Well, it's a business, and he's going to pay taxes, so that's money in our pocket.
Mrs. Morgan, please, okay.
I didn't say it was a failed business, and I didn't know this was a two-way conversation.
General public comments, trustee Williams, general public comments aren't toward the end, and we shouldn't tolerate people continually have outbursts in the council meetings.
Thank you, I conclude.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee Thompson.
Go ahead, trustee Thompson.
So on page two of the material, it says permitted uses, construction business, offices, mechanical shop, contractors' yard, outdoor storage and parking of trucks and equipment, outdoor storage of materials, fuel tanks below and above ground, outdoor advertising structure, and those land uses expressly enumerated in a general industrial list that fourth in section twelve sixty point zero three of the zoning ordinance. That sounds a lot, like a, I'm, I'm just going to say it in plain English, that sounds like another junkyard.
It sounds like what, trustee Thompson?
Another ju-, a junkyard, junk.
Sounds like a junkyard.
No, we're not doing junkyards in the town. You, you have, you have the landowner who's knocking on the village of University Park's door to annex in. So currently, what we, do you know where Hamilton Road is?
Of course I do, I've been living here since nineteen eighty-nine.
All right then, so currently what we're receiving on Hamilton Road, it all helps us in our goal, traffic, people, restaurants, stores, hotel. It, it's a part of the formula to get us where we need to go as a community.
Okay, I have a question, trustee Paulcher.
There are no residents in the industrial park at all.
Trustee Paulcher has a question, Mayor.
Yes, yes, trustee.
So this is currently zoned for agricultural, and it needs to be go back to the planning commission for variance for it to be zoned for industrial, correct?
Yes, which I've already done.
It, it cannot go to the planning commission until it's annexed into the community.
I just, I understand, I'm asking the question as for.
Okay, I, I can't hear you well, Donna, look.
Right, it will have to go back to the planning commission, I know because you were just stating earlier that it did not have to go back, but it does have to go back to the planning commission for them to first approve the variance, to allow it to be industrial, so I, I think that it should be, that should be done first before the planning commission does annexation, and then the variance, because who's to say that it'd be approved through the planning commission? So I understand what you're presenting, but it still has to go back to the planning commission for approval for the variance, and then again.
Once, once they're into the community, you, once it's in the community, then it has to go to planning.
Right.
Commission.
Once it's into the community, but the whole purpose of it coming into community is for a storage facility, a lot of the different things that was stated. So the main thing is whether or not we as a village want to have this particular business inside the village. So I don't want, wouldn't want anybody to be, us to be doing things if that's not a, a business that we want to be brought in. I mean, because just like what trustee Thompson was saying, we have a lot of maintenance facilities that's being presented here, and that's looked like that's taken up a lot of the land.
This is not a maintenance facility.
Maintenance facility or storage facility, it's like storing stuff. The other one is repairing cars and trucks. I'm just saying, it's a lot of that type of stuff going on, and I know we was just brought in a, a, someone that's going to be working with our economic development to find different things that we can be using for here in University Park, so I would love for them to be reached out to to say what is their recommendation. So I, I understand that you're bringing here, you might have had conversations before with others.
I've had several meetings here.
Okay, right.
I've been over here just over, this is about two and a half years now working on this. And you guys, you guys approved it last time I was here. So then we had to go through the annex.
Well, well, maybe it was a different board, but I'm just saying in general, this is the first that I'm hearing of it. From my understanding, as far as annex, it was never presented that I can remember. So if you presented it within the past two, two years, that's something that I, I'm not familiar with, and I think that's something that we should. So.
Can I just say that procedurally, though, you wouldn't have it go back before, it first has to be annexed into the village. So I think that's the rationale, that, well, I know that that's the rationale for it being done this way.
Annex to come into the, to the village, but the purpose to get it annexed into the village is for a storage facility. So that's what I'm saying, if that's not something that the board or the village wants is to have the storage facility here, then we might not need to do the annexation, that's the purpose of what I was saying.
Yeah, right.
Okay, the question I have is you said you had several meetings, who was it with?
You folks right here.
Me as trustee, I've been up here three terms.
Yes, sir.
What's my name?
I don't remember, sir.
I yield my time.
I don't, I don't think he would remember your name, but I think we don't have minutes posted, so it's hard to keep up with things.
He ain't been here, that was me, I've been up here three terms.
Okay.
Apparently he don't want it that bad, he's not a duck.
Well, Mayor, just so you know, we don't have minutes posted. We get a lot of people in here, I don't remember.
Every time somebody comes to that mic, and I can say, oh, that's Charles Brown.
That's horrible.
I don't know that, so I'm just trying to understand, if we're trying to annex it, it still has to go through the planning commission, and I prefer to hear their outcome, which I served on, because they're going to do all the homework and checking and balancing, so we can decide and make a informative vote.
Trustee, I just want to make a point.
So, so, excuse, excuse, excuse me, guys, let me just make one, one point. The opportunity for the annexation is a good thing, because once it's annexed in, it belongs to the property of the village. Then the board can designate or say what they want to do with the land, but the whole intention is stop deterring the business in the, of community, let's get the land into the community.
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry, FYI, the gentleman, he left. Who was standing up to the podium presenting, he left, just FYI.
Yeah, I, I'd be frustrated everywhere, because people want to do business with, with people, and understand the process. The planning commission has no involvement with anything outside of the corporate boundaries. The planning commission only has jurisdiction once they are located within the corporate boundaries of the village of University Park.
Mayor.
So, yes, sir.
I just want to say this, first of all, we don't have plenty of businesses to come in here. This gentleman comes in here, he doesn't show anything, he don't, not only he doesn't show anything, but then he says, you people. First of all, let's make it clear, I hear what you're saying. I think I could not have been more clear of saying, we've been up here, I know at least one, two, two trustees that've been up here with me more than one term, somebody gives a map. Now, Ms. Scott is not here, she normally articulates everything, but some people give us a map. This man don't even come in with a map. What he does is he says he meet with you people. Now, I'm sorry, I know who Mayor Ruiz is, he's shown enough to know who the hell his Brooks is, because I'm going to ask him. And he said he been up here several times, my question was, did you meet with the mayor, did you meet with Ms. Scott? If he said that, I'm fine, that was the answer I was expecting, I didn't expect you people, because he never met with us. I'm being honest, and honestly, Mayor.
That's the wrong language.
Yeah, yeah, and, and honestly, Mayor, if it is something, I don't care how much we feud, you will say, Brooks, what about this? Brooks, what about that? I'm just saying, I never heard of it, and we didn't have a cow this month, and yes, if he was going to get a yes vote, I'm telling you, we just, we didn't have a map in front of us, I understand what trustee Williams was saying, because she was saying, hey, I see where she going to do a presentation, he's not even doing that. And I think he got insulted because trustee Thompson mentioned the word a junkyard or whatever, he might have felt insulted. But he, he never, he, he, it was just the fact that he, he didn't like that, and he left. We're not trying to discourage, but if you're going to come in here, that's the problem, we say yes to a lot of things and don't get exactly what we supposed to be getting as a community. I yield my time, sir, I'm done with it.
Okay, so, so he's gone, so what is the board's pleasure to do with this item?
Man, man, we, we can, I can motion a table, because we were in the right direction.
Okay, is there a second to your motion, Brooks, we, we got to keep on going.
Second.
Can I have trustee Brooks make a motion to table, is there a second, trustee Brooks?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Jenkinsville? Trustee Paulcher?
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson?
No.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
Mayor Ruiz.
Uh, vote aye, Madam Clerk.
And Mayor Ruiz, when you do talk to him again, you better tell him, watch the word, you people, and I yield my time.
And, and I don't think that was actually him that came before. Thank you. Attentive items are approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the village of University Park that occurred on June twenty-fifth through June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. General fund, six hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and four sixty-three. Road and bridge, fifty-eight thousand, eight fifty-one and thirty-three. Town center fund, five thousand, eleven and ninety-two. University golf club, seventeen thousand, seven forty-eight and forty-two. Capital project fund, thirty-nine thousand, eighty-one and eighty. Tiff, four, um, three thousand eighty-five, tiff seven hundred dollars. Payroll fund, four thousand one hundred eighty-nine and eighteen, for a grand total, seven thirty-three, four seventy-two and twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion?
Not until it's on the floor. That was you, trustee Lewis.
Yeah, some of.
Questions?
We need a second.
Oh, we, is that a second on the bills payable?
Second.
Second, trustee Lewis.
Lewis made the motion. Williams? Correct.
Okay, Williams made the second, thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Question?
Mayor, trustee Brooks, no, just.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I'm seeing a couple scholarships, Illinois State scholarships, where those scholarships, I, I'm seeing like, oh, they have this, going to the same person four times, and I think another one, two, three times, is, that's, is. Okay, I seen it in your eye, yeah.
Oh. Those are all different vendors, uh, different individual students who that corresponds to for the scholarship.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were not making a mistake in cutting the same check two, three times.
Yeah.
So what I understand is that the check was cut directly to the school on behalf of the individual for whatever was the reimbursement. Because that's why each of the check is issued to the same college for the same dollar amount, but the description for the vendor is the same person's name, but from what I was told, it's a different student for each one.
Okay, if you look at this one, recipient J Lewis is here four times.
Uh, but it's, it, the description as to the vendor payment as to the person, that's incorrect, it's four different students. They just all wrote it as J Lewis, J Lewis, J Lewis, J Lewis.
Then that's not, that's not accurate, recognize that.
May I make a comment? When we, when we get bills from the other attorney, there's no names. And we, and we vote aye to it, but we have no names, we might just see conference call, but no name.
J Lewis would not receive it four times, right?
Correct. No, he's the individual where the check is going to, but the individual children, names for the scholarship, it goes to them once they get to the school.
So when I raise the question, it's each check is for a different student. So when I raise the question, it's each check is for a different student. It's just the descriptions that was placed on what you guys are seeing in front of you with all the same student, but it's each, from what I was told, each check is related to a different student.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it's, it's Lewis, King.
No, that's not me.
No, I know it's not you. I did think about track when I seen Illinois State. Um, uh, King.
Yeah.
It, you know, right. So I just only seen it, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six. Right.
Yep.
I mean, I could see that Chris was eager to, to explain it, so I kinda, I kinda knew it was something behind it. I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear you.
You got, you got, you got clarity now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
What they was looking for was clarity to say recipient in the individual's name. That's what Jewel is talking about. She's saying, it says the one person that it's going to, but it should also say recipient of the, of the person who's receiving it.
Mayor, it says the same person's name like four times, instead of saying each individual person's name.
So, um, Chris, sorry, can, can they just update the registry with the information? 'Cause inside the packet, inside the bills payable, I did see it was individuals. It wasn't a duplicate of the same person, but just for the, because I believe this is what gets submitted when it goes to the, um, minutes, so it could be just updated.
I will check with them if, if they can change the AP set, settings to say, instead of having the description, whatever the name is to each of the individual for. I will see if not, worst case scenario is all you, all they would do is, um, delete the, or void the three current ones you have in front of you. So if it's check one, two, three, four, it would become one, two, three, four, six, so to speak. It would be the same thing, same vendor invoices, except the check numbers would change, if we can't just change it on the back end.
So in the packet, if you go on to department zero, zero, four dot zero, zero committees, and it has the name of the individuals, we gonna read off their names, what there are different names for each one, what school they're going to, and the date, and the amount.
Just trustee Lewis, if you look at the top of that page, the student's name is there.
Are these kind of dead bond students?
This one is to Florida A&amp;M.
Yes.
Near the top, they do have the recipient's name there.
Go ahead, trustee.
One, one, three.
You gotta turn it on.
Turn your mic on.
One, one, three, six, eight, five, for seven hundred and forty dollars. And I would also like to refer that to the attorney for clarification in reference to the seven hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. Is there any, anything else?
I have one question about one, one, three, seven, two, six. Stepping with the Veterans DJ Memorial Event is not stepping with the veterans, the committee chair's personal company?
What's that check?
One, one, three, seven, two, six.
Seven, two, six.
I said, is that, is that not the committee chair's company?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe he submitted receipts, 'cause he bought the things in advance for the, uh, veterans.
It says DJ. It says DJ for Memorial, it's a separate one for the Memorial.
Pardon me?
But then this one is for DJ.
Yeah, he had, it was a DJ here.
What, what number is that again, trustee Thompson?
One, one, three, seven, two, six.
One, one, three, seven, two, six.
That was Memorial, Memorial Day event, and there was a DJ here playing music.
That wasn't my question.
Oh, I thought you asked who was.
No, this is his company. Stepping with the Veterans is his company.
Oh, yeah.
That might.
But he's also the chair of that committee.
He's, he's the chair of the, right, of the Veterans Committee, and this is a separate entity, I guess, that he has.
Trustee, what was the check number you called out again?
One, one, three, seven, six, two.
No, trustee.
No, one, one, three, seven, two, six.
No, six, eight, five.
Six, eight, five.
Right.
Six, eight, five, to who? Okay, well, yeah, Montana and Welch, that's valid. They did do work. As a matter of fact, we owe them a thirteen hundred dollar bill, so yes, it's bona fide. Excuse me.
Wait, I don't know who Montana and Welch represents. I haven't seen them here. I haven't seen them present and accounted for. And I'm trying to understand that, from what my understanding, is that they are legislative council. I've been on this board for a hundred and eighteen days, and I have not heard from them. I don't know who they represent, because they definitely don't represent me. So how can I pay them seven hundred and forty dollars? And I haven't seen any invoices in any of the things that they're doing.
Okay, so trustee, unfortunately, when you left in the last election, Montana and Welch was hired, and they became the legislative attorney, and it was by four votes. And they are there if you need them. In fact, we talked to them. So it was agreement, it was done. If you wanna see a bill, if you wanna call him, you can call him, just like you pick up the phone and call Bert Odelson or Michael Costado when you were, when you were on the board before.
Uh, well, my, my, I'm gonna say this, and I mean what I say, and I say what I mean. My thing is, is this, if he has not contacted me as a legislator here in this village, then I have a problem. I'm not supposed to contact him first. Excuse me?
If you have a question for Montana and Welch, there, there might.
And my thing is.
Trustee, I gave you, I gave you your floor.
Okay, okay. I'll let you speak.
If you wanna contact Montana and Welch, you can. If I'm not mistaken, you free to pick up the phone and call them if you have a legislative issue. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, you did tell me you wanted to reach out to them, did you not?
I don't know. I don't remember reaching out to.
You did, you did.
No, I didn't. Well, I'm gonna say this, and I mean what I say.
I don't think, I don't think we should play this game in front of the public.
It's fault.
I don't think we should play this game in front of the public.
It's final. It's fault. And we can handle this in a sidebar.
Voting on as is.
Uh, no, it's fault.
People, let, let's, let's have some, let's have some calm here. Let's one speak at a time.
Mayor, just make a comment. Um, trustee, you said that you didn't know what they did. They do have in here the invoice and the breakdown of their billable.
Okay.
Um, service, so it is a part of the.
Well, my thing is, is this, I'm not gonna, I wanna talk to the villagers, the lead village attorney in reference to this check, and it will be paid at the next, at the next, uh, bill run. And I have no problem with paying them, but I wanna make sure that there is clarification when it comes to it. I have that right.
You sure you have that right?
And thank you.
I'm just curious, why would you bring it up now? They haven't been paid. That would shows may. They got an April bill in there. So my thing is, is that trustee, we can sit here and play games all we want to with the pay, or we don't like nobody, or what we wanna do. That's fine. I'm saying, let's not waste time and play games with it.
Oh, my thing is, is this.
Period.
I've seen invoices, and we will discuss this in executive session in a sidebar.
This don't calls for executive session. You can talk to me soon as we walk out this door.
Uh, well, we'll, we'll talk in a sidebar.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with that, but as of now, the check stays pulled.
We'll need a motion in a second to pull that check.
So let, let me ask this question. For the checks that you guys are pulling, are you wanna consider those separately or just remove them from the pay period?
I'm gonna pull that one, we'll pull separately.
So that has to go through a council vote, so you guys decide, are those all the questions? And Madam Clerk, do you have all the checks that have been requested by the individuals on the board? Because it has to be a consensus for any of them to move forward or be set to the side.
Okay, Mrs. May.
I didn't have a chance, I haven't had a chance to.
So forth, just one check being requested to be pulled, Mayor.
I thought it was two.
To be pulled.
The stepping with the veterans check.
I'm sorry, are you done, trustee Thompson? Okay, well, I don't see, where the village manager's not here, and I don't see the fire chief, but it was my question was for the fire service, which was check number one, one, three, six, five, zero. Um, the question is, this was for an accident. Will we be reimbursed? I don't know if Chris knows this information, but that's the question. Are we being reimbursed for this?
Trustee, I thought your question was on a different fire-related check. The larger, um, the one's check number one, one, three, six, six, four. I thought that was your question on that one. I could speak on this fire service check. I don't know about. I can look into it and get you guys an answer, but at this moment, I don't have details on that check.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we're getting reimbursed.
I'll find out, and I can get you, I can get you an answer.
Okay. So, uh, right, it said, it's from an accident, but it says repairs from accident, but it, yeah, but it's, but it's still, you know, if it was sent out on a claim, are we getting reimbursed for this? Or is this something that we're paying for? That was just the question really for the village manager, but she's not here. Um, as to pull the check, I don't, I'm not gonna say it has to be pulled, but I do, I would like that information. Um, then we have, I'm sorry, making it bigger.
Change.
One moment.
So, so, go ahead, trustee Folchi.
Okay, one moment, let me get the other one. So check number one, one, three, six, five, three, this is another question for the village manager. I thought we wasn't doing any reimbursement for medical, for, uh, medical, um, visits. One, one, three, six, five, three. I thought we stopped doing reimbursements for health insurance. I mean, not for health insurance, but for, um, doctors' visits. And I, I know you can't answer, 'cause, but I believe, right, trustee Lewis, I think you said you remember that. I thought we did stop doing that, so I would like to pull that check. So it's the one, one, three, six, five, three, for clarity on that one. And then.
Um, trustee, in regards to your fire service check, I just got confirmation from fire chief, yes, that is getting reimbursed from the insurance company.
Thank you. Okay, and then another question was like, with this Yes Print, Yes Press, these are the newsletters, I, I guess, we keep hearing we're gonna get newsletters, but we still haven't received them. But this is a pretty big amount, almost over six thousand dollars for these. Check number.
Madam Clerk, are you, are you there?
I, I do not see that. It's with Yes Press.
I'd just like to ask the Madam Clerk, when did the board get the bills payable?
Uh, well, I'm still, and I'm still in the middle of talking about the bills, so you, that question really can be asked, regardless of when we get the bills, if we're not, unable to get the information about the bills. Regardless if we don't have the information for the bills, that's, we have questions. That's why we're here to approve them. So if we have questions about some of them, that's why we're bringing them up. So as for this one, yes, I have questions. I don't have the, the check number, but that was for the newsletter, which is pretty high. I think we talked about this before. Okay, so check number one, one, three, seven, one, five. Reimbursement for Memorial Event. Check number one, one, three, seven, one, five. And this is based off of the, so the note that's on here is that the village manager was unaware of any of this, um, beforehand. So I can't go along with approving something that the village manager had no information on, nor did she approve it. And that's for reimbursement at the memorial event. So the committee chair needs to, future, needs to reach out to the village manager when they have their plans, and let them know about what are they wanting to present, so she can get the, she can approve it first, but this wasn't approved. Check number one, zero, six, six, zero, one. And that's for sound barrier. I know I had this conversation at the last board meeting in regards to the stage. That was another thing that needed to be reviewed with the board. And we're here again with this amount. One, zero, six, six, zero, one. And then, check number one, one, three, seven, four, seven. It said the refund of the ticket double payment. I didn't see a double payment. I seen two different dates of a ticket, and one for, and I think that's what, I don't know, trustee. One, one, three, seven, four, seven.
That's mine.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't see, it says for a ref, refund of ticket double payment. And I didn't see a double payment or receipt for the double payment. I seen two different tickets.
Okay, let me explain. I paid the ticket. I got home, and I found out the, the ticket that I brought up there had actually doubled. So I went back a day or two later to pay it again, but instead of them just charging me the fifty dollar more, they charged me a hundred dollar more. I'm not paying a hundred and fifty dollars for a ticket that originally was fifty and had doubled. So they had taken my credit card, ran it through, and it was paid. And now, to show you how maybe incompetent, I don't know the word, they still sent it to collection. But I've got that straightening out. So that was low down, and yes, I want my fifty dollars back.
Okay, so I was just looking at the notes from the, the village manager, and she was stating that she did not see a receipt, nor did she see that it was duplicated, so.
The receipt was given to our collector, John E. Pay, who turned it over to Melinda and Marie. So I will talk to Liz Scott. It's all legit. Thank you. So I will talk to Liz Scott. It's all legit. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and that was the last one for me.
That was the last one?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, my question to you is, when did the board get the bills payable?
They got the patches on Sunday, Saturday.
Sunday.
Sunday, yes.
Okay, well, that kind of understands why they got the questions. I'm thinking they got it on Friday. Because I would really appreciate to show the professionalism to the real world that we don't do this in a public session when you have an opportunity to contact the manager or the finance department prior to any meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, I did not get the agenda until Friday afternoon.
Okay, that's, that's fine, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
And just, I wanted to,
Okay.
I just wanted to also make the statement that, you know, even though we might receive it, we received it on Sunday. Um, if we go to the village manager or something, we can't just say, I want this pulled. We have to go through the, the process here at the board in order to pull those checks. So even though we might have questions or we want, we can go to the village manager and say, I have questions about this particular check. Nothing is gonna still happen until we come to the board meeting to present it so it could be pulled. So that's the process. So I understand that, yeah, we don't, we shouldn't have to go through those type of things, but going to the village manager beforehand is gonna be really nothing. It's gonna happen. It happens here at the board meeting before we vote on bills payable.
It just helps to get an understanding and to eliminate all this time that we spend. When I watch other board meetings, it's nothing like this. We are literally pulling teeth every time it comes to bills payable. And I know, we're trying to make sure our tax dollars are being taken care of. But some of this can be eliminated by asking her some of the questions and getting a better understanding. Then you can say, oh, that makes sense. And you don't have to come in here and keep digging and digging and trying to, you know, again, I just, I just watch other board meetings and I've yet to see one that spends an hour or more on bills payable.
Well, I'm not sure if we really asked a lot of questions. It just said we asked to pull checks. So that process has to happen at the board meeting. You can't, if I can go to the village manager and say, I want this check pulled, I want this check pulled before it's voted on, I can't do that. So we have to present this information.
I get clarity from her all the time, and it's not a problem.
You could get clarity, but it doesn't mean it's pulled. So we're asking to pull checks. We're asking to pull. We're asking to pull checks.
I get what you're saying.
Do that beforehand.
Sometime it doesn't even have to get to the point where it's pulled, when I can find out ahead of time what that was for. Was this for the DJ? Was this for the stage? I can ask those questions and get the information I need. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Foltzer, just so unclear. Okay, thank you. You know where I was going.
In reality, we shouldn't even be on our phones in the board meeting.
This is my village phone.
So Madam Clerk, are there, is there gonna be board action in a vote, the checks that they've asked to be considered separately or pulled?
Yes, sir. As soon as I get them, Trustee Foltzer. Anybody else have checks that they're pulling besides?
113.
Trustee Thompson.
113726.
Is that your only one?
I think that was mine.
Okay, we will need a motion in a second to proceed to pull that.
So I make a motion.
Motion by Thompson. Is there a second? Motion by Thompson. Is there a second? That Trustee Brooks? Roll call, Madam. And, and so the motion is for what, Trustee?
To pull the check.
To pull them to do what? Consider them separately or not to pay them?
To pull the checks, not pay.
Uh, there's a motion by Trustee Thompson and a second by Trustee Brooks. Roll call, not to pay the vendors. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkinsville. Trustee Foltzer.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Ruth Dins.
Uh, I'm staying, Madam Clerk. Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
Uh, I'm sorry. Mayor Ruth Dins. Uh, just so, just for the record, the motion to pull check number 113726 did pass to pull that.
Okay. So, so now the, the majority of the bills payable, is there a motion to pay the bills?
Trust, I'm sorry, Mayor Ruth Dins. There's some others to be pulled.
Oh, there's, there's more? Okay.
Yes, sir. We, what's, I, I can't hear you. We need to do it separately. No. We need a second.
There's a motion by Trustee Jenkins. Is there a second? Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Just so that I'm clear, Mayor, we're going to pull the check and not pay or pull for clarity.
What you say?
I'm sorry.
Which one did you say?
1136, 113685, a motion to pull.
And I have to vote on each one separately.
You have to vote individually on these, right, Madam Clerk?
She said what?
She said to pull and not pay for clarity.
Not until clarity, until clarification.
Okay, perhaps this motion to pull and hold for clarity. Is that what I'm hearing? Just so I'm sure.
To pull. The motion is to pull and not pay.
Okay. Is there, is there a second? We have to do this individually, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Trust, Trustee Jenkins has made a motion. Is there a second to Trustee Jenkins' motion?
That's correct, sir. We have a motion and a second for check 113684 to pull.
Uh-uh, 685.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Hold on.
Vote on 684. That was my, my vote, because I wrote 684.
She said 685, 113685. That's my talent well, she said.
It's 113685.
Now I can do the roll call.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides for clarity.
This is not said for clarity. This say pull and don't pay.
Oh, the pull then. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking she said to have a pull for clarity. I see. Okay.
Trustee Williams, I'm sorry.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkinsville.
Both sides.
Trustee Foltzer.
Votes no.
Trustee Thompson.
Votes no.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Ruth Dins.
Madam Clerk, it's kind of breaking up. What's the count?
I'm sorry. The count is,
What?
The count is tied 3-3.
Votes no.
That motion failed, so this check will not be held.
But, but one thing I, I would like to make a comment, it's completely unfair and unethical to utilize any service. Can, next items.
Okay.
684.
He got his pay repaid.
I just did 68 tied. Okay, so now, the other one. We pulled. We did. Okay. I got 685. That's the one we just voted on. Is that your only one?
And I'd like to, so, like to make the motion to pull check number 113715. And this is for the Memorial Day celebration, celebration with reimbursement.
Second.
Okay. Want to pull, what's that check number?
113715 for the Memorial Day reimbursement where the village manager did not review or approve.
And I second, Madam Clerk.
Is, is that everything?
No, sir. We got this one. 113785.
715.
I'm sorry. That's what I, 755. To pull? No, is this to pull for clarity or pull and not pay?
Foltzer.
To pull. Or not pay?
Got a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis.
Uh, both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkinsville. Trustee Foltzer.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
And, yeah, yeah, yes.
Your vote, sir?
So there's, um, and this is check number one. I'm looking at the check. Both sides.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, for the record, 113755.
715.
Seven, and that's what I forgot. Uh, pass to pull and not pay.
I make a motion to pull check number 106601 for Sound Barrier. This is for the,
I'm sorry, 106.
601. And this is for Sound Barrier. This is for the stage during the most car show where this was discussed last board meeting.
You discussed it at the last board meeting, but I didn't hear anybody else have a concern and.
I just said it was, I just said it was discussed.
Can I, can I finish speaking, please, Trustee? Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, there was a vendor, uh, someone else who paid for it, this last, the stage's last car show, so.
Somebody paid for the last one, where it's on, it's on bills payable. So if they paid for the stage, then it shouldn't be.
It, it just come, they just got the check late, so it had to be paid for, but it would be all put right back where it's supposed to be. But, again.
For clarity, Trustee, to pull to not be paid.
We do the roll call.
I motion, I go with that.
I second.
Motion by Foltzer, second by Thompson?
Yes.
Well, I'm not gonna go, yes, to pull no stuff like that. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Nobody asked.
Trustee Brooks. Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Foltzer.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkinsville. Trustee Williams.
Votes no.
Trustee Lewis.
Votes no.
Mayor Ruth Dins.
Absolutely, votes no.
This motion failed. This check will not be pulled.
Sometimes I want the people really wanna see growth and development in the community or just kill everything. The devil is busy.
This has, that has nothing to do with anything.
I don't know. I was on speaker. I'm sorry.
Growth don't have, that don't have nothing to do with anything.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna do a roll call on the bills payable as a mandate, correct?
Okay, is, is there a motion to pay the bills tonight?
We got a motion and a, no, we need this one as a mandate. Not.
So move.
No.
That's to pay the, to pay the bills, right? A motion to pay the bills.
Right. So move.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkinsville. Trustee Foltzer.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Ruth Dins.
Votes I to pay the bills. Okay. That does it. Are there any people for general public comments?
Ms. Molly, Ms. Millie is the, do we have another sheet with some names on it? Ms. Millie is the only one that signed in. I'm sorry.
My name's Caroline Tate. I'm, this is on behalf of Altech. I'm their attorney. I'm just.
I'm sorry. Can you?
My name is Caroline Tate.
you actually would make, is a motion to reconsider the motion to table, it would have to be someone that voted for the motion to table, to make that motion to reconsider the motion to table. Now, that's how it would work, so whoever voted in the affirmative, anyone that voted, anyone that voted in the affirmative to table, can make a motion to reconsider the motion to table.
Okay.
That being said, then, once you make the motion to reconsider the motion to table, then you would, it then comes back up, if you want to, you know, be presented with information, and it's on the agenda, so it's not like you, you know, you're violating...
It's not reinvent, no way off, right?
Right, you, you can listen to whatever it is that they have to present, and then you would go back to the original motion, so then you would, you know, after they present, then you could make a motion to approve as it's stated currently in the agenda.
So a motion to reconsider.
Now, this is for Altech.
Oh, Altech.
No, I'm asking you first.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody that voted in the affirmative, so anybody that voted for the motion to table would have to say, make a motion, so, you weren't the only one that voted for it.
We all voted to. Yeah.
No, no. It was, it was a majority.
The way?
The manager worked extremely hard with these people, that's ridiculous.
According to my records.
Your phone is on, mayor.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about his comment, shh, I'm talking, right.
We had four to table.
So any one of those four could vote to reconsider, make a motion to reconsider the motion to table.
Okay, we had Jenkins-Bell, Falls here, Thompson, and Brooks.
Will trustee Jenkins-Bell make a motion to reconsider?
I, yes, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the motion to table.
I would read it out, though, trustee, the motion to table, the, the, Altech.
Okay. The motion to table, the F...
Okay. Done, it was tabled, now the motion should be...
The motion to reconsider, the motion to table, Al, Altech.
Petition for variance.
Petition for variance.
Right now, you're just, all that's saying is you, you're making a motion to remove it from the table, and then that means you're bringing it back up.
Okay.
So once the motion's second, you vote on it, then you can let them present, and then you can make a motion on the original motion after that, so, but you guys didn't, you just made, somebody made the motion.
Second.
Right.
Second.
Is there, there a second?
Louis seconded.
Okay, let's go through the process, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Just a moment. Okay. Oh, this is Altech. Trustee, trustee Brooks?
Both I.
This is to reconsider.
Reconsider, right?
Yeah, trustee Thompson.
Trustee Thompson.
Trustee Thompson. Trustee Falls here.
Votes no.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
You got a sound on your mic.
Yes.
Votes I.
Okay. Trustee Williams.
Votes I.
Trustee Lewis.
Votes I.
Mayor Rudehead.
Votes I.
Okay, so now it's...
Okay, now we have to start the process again, I, F2A acceptance of the planning commission's recommendation for Altech's petition for variance, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm, I'm happy to walk you through the presentation, or just answer questions, whatever you'd like me to do. Okay, so the presentation was meant to share a little bit about Altech, to give some context, we, can I take this off? We're a family-owned company since 1929, we're a leading provider of products and services, primarily to electric utility, telecom, tree care, lights and signs, and contractor markets. We deliver products and services to over 100 countries throughout the world, and, and this is a request for a service center. We currently have 50 service centers through the US and Canada, including one in Grayslake, north of Chicago. On the second slide, you can see kind of our major product lines, certainly of those four, Aerials, Dericks, Cranes and Bodies, Aerials, you'll see a lot of, driving from O'Hare to here, I probably saw four or five on the interstate. The, I touched on it earlier, but the major industries are electric utility, telecom, tree care, and construction. The, the site is 2418 Bond Street, currently it's vacant, it's roughly, it's almost nine acres, eight, 8.7, it's undeveloped farmland, currently zoned industrial, and the site is surrounded by other industrial activity, industrial warehousing, industrial transportation, printing, manufacturing. We are proposing a service building, which is about 13,000 square feet, there'd be an office area with meeting rooms and a break room, and then a shop area that has nine service bays, and then it would have one wash bay and a parts room, and of course restrooms. Outside, you would have about 133,000 square feet of storage area, gravelled storage area, a stability pest, stability test pad area, that's where, you know, the, the trucks have outriggers on them, and they, they test the stability of the units out there on those. Would have quite a large stormwater management facility, about 72,000 square feet, would hold about 1.3 million gallons of water, I believe, and that's part of, that's to meet code, and then would have a paved customer-employee parking area, and an overnight customer drop-off area, sometimes units come in, the gates are locked, they, they park them in this overnight drop-off area, and then they're taken into the yard the next morning when the crew starts work. On the next slide, you can see our proposed uses, the, the use is written away, to try to capture in detail what it is that we do at these facilities, but to sum it up, you know, Altech, if you look on an earlier slide of the different, the Aerials and Dericks, the Cranes and Bodies, Altech manufactures those things, you, you take a Ford freightliner, whatever chassis, Altech manufactures the unit, installs it on the chassis, and sells it. This is an aftermarket service center that services and repairs the unit, not the chassis, this is focused on the mobile industrial equipment repair. The, for the, the request that the, the planning commission affirmed was for an authorized variance, we've been working with the village for quite a while on our use, and the, the village determined that it, it wasn't a permitted use, but it was really close, and originally had proposed that we seek a special use permit, but when looking at the special use, special uses that are listed in the code, we're really closer to the permitted uses than the special uses, and we aren't close to the prohibited uses at all, and so, that's how we landed, or were directed to this authorized variance path. As I noted earlier, permitted uses that are allowed are garages, public garages, that allow storage, repair, and servicing of motor vehicles, I understand there's a distinction between the equipment on the motor vehicle chassis and the motor vehicle, but it's pretty close, and then, another subsection also allows the, the manufacturing, fabricating, processing, producing, cleaning, testing, repair, transfer, and storage of materials, goods, and products. You know, the, Altech's equipment, we consider those goods and products, there certainly are goods and products that we try to sell. In, in applying for an authorized variance, the, the code requires you justify that, that the property can't yield a reasonable return, that the, the variance is needed due to a unique circumstance, and that you won't alter the essential character of the locality. Without a variance, as it stands now, Altech can't use the property for what it wants to use for, so, Altech would yield no return, if, if the use isn't approved, we, we won't buy the property, and won't develop, develop it. The, the plight due to unique circumstance, I, I think that the unique circumstance here is that Altech's kind of in a niche market, I guess you'd say, you know, we, we are a critical supplier of critical infrastructure, but the mobile industrial equipment isn't something that a lot of people do, so it doesn't really fit neatly within a lot of pre-written zoning code uses. So, you know, I, I think that's a little bit unique to, our, our, our unique circumstance is the unique nature of our business, however, it, we do not feel like it will alter the character of the locality at all, the, the code actually says that the industrial zoning district was designed to serve a broad range of industrial activity, even with the expectation that manufacturing uses are the dominant activity in the district. This, in my opinion at least, is less intensive than manufacturing, and driving by the area, it's, it's surrounded by other industrial uses, and this seems like a, a good fit for the area. Ma'am? Ma'am?
You said it's, like, near Bond Street, right?
Yes, ma'am. There's, there's a fire station on the corner?
Yes, yes, okay, okay, now.
And then a hinge company, a hinge manufacturer on the other side?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, additional considerations for the variance, we, we do think that Altech's business is beneficial to public welfare, we, we do serve critical infrastructure, if you, if you watch the news, anytime there's a natural disaster, watch news coverage, there's a good chance you're gonna see an Altech manufactured vehicle traveling to the disaster area. Right now, we're budgeting about a $9 million investment on this site, right now, projections are to hire 14 people to work at the service center, and the, the stormwater management facility will hold around 1.3 million gallons of stormwater, which should reduce impact on the storm sewers in the city. At the, at the planning commission meeting, there was a question about our, our cleanliness, and, you know, we take great pride in our environmental cleanliness and sustainability, we spend a lot of money and, and use a lot of effort to ensure that we are as clean as possible, the, the wash bay in the service center has a recycled water system, so all the water that's used to wash trucks, none of it goes into the storm sewers, all that wastewater is re, cleaned, it's captured, cleaned, and reused over and over again. So I, I just use that as an example of the investment we make to ensure the cleanliness of our facilities. That was the, that was our presentation for the planning commission, that they sought fit for approval, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, though, and if I can't answer them, we've got our engineer and somebody who spent... dominant activity in the district. This, in my opinion at least, is less intensive than manufacturing. And driving by the area, it's surrounded by other industrial uses, and this seems like a good fit for the area. Ma'am? Ma'am?
You said it's like near Bond Street, right?
Yes, ma'am. There's a fire station on the corner?
Yes, yes, okay, okay, now.
And then a hinge company, a hinge manufacturer on the other side?
Yep.
So additional considerations for the variance, we do think that Altech's business is beneficial to public welfare. We do serve critical infrastructure. If you watch the news, anytime there's a natural disaster, watch news coverage, there's a good chance you're going to see an Altech manufactured vehicle traveling to the disaster Right now, we're budgeting about a nine million dollar investment on this site. Right now, projections are to hire fourteen people to work at the service center. And the stormwater management facility will hold around one point three million gallons of stormwater, which should reduce impact on the storm sewers in the city. At the Planning Commission meeting, there was a question about our cleanliness. And, you know, we take great pride in our environmental cleanliness and sustainability. We spend a lot of money and use a lot of effort to ensure that we are as clean as possible. The wash bay in the service center has a recycled water system. So all the water that's used to wash trucks, none of it goes into the storm sewers. All that wastewater is cleaned, it's captured, cleaned, and reused over and over again. So I just use that as an example of the investment we make to ensure the cleanliness of our facilities. That was our presentation for the Planning Commission, that they sought fit for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, though. And if I can't answer them, we've got our engineer and somebody who's spent years in service operations who may be able to help us well.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes. Trustee Thompson is asked to be recognized.
Go ahead, Trustee Thompson.
How long would the build-out take?
How long will it take? I don't know the answer to that. I think in past experience, it's about nine to twelve months from permitting.
Any other questions of the council? Trustee?
Yes. My time is going to be more of a comment. I just would like to express to your company that please pardon the first part of today when we ask, is there material for us to look at? University Park has prime property, and we are in a position where we just don't, we're about tired of giving up land. So sometime when you see that standoff with the board and someone who may come up to the podium saying, gimme, 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 or can we, that's what you're going to get. You have residents that have been here, sitting around you, that have been here over forty years, and they watch industrial park become, you know, almost a moneymaker for those out there and not them. The taxpayers just got lifted from a pretty much a burden on twenty-four, twenty-five year tiffs. So I just want to say for that, you know, please pardon if it seemed like someone was not interested, but this was the key thing I was speaking about, and it seemed like you were trying to figure out, okay, what is he asking me? And I could see it in your face, and then, as you can see, I tried to, the mayor is not here, so he can't physically see what we're asking for. But then, as I looked across, and I think it was Trustee Williams and Lewis, kind of, you know, they kind of got what I was saying, and then I whispered to my colleague, like, we don't have a map, we don't have anything, but I'm gonna be honest, I see what you just gave me, and this was sufficient, because I was able to see and process. It's not about being a legislator. I know you heard comments earlier that it was unpleasant, but a legislator has to think about everybody. And in this case, you are indeed in an area that does need developing. You know, you're right by the station house. I do even like how your facility look on the back page. And when you talk about cleanliness, yes, you know, at one of your facility, that would indeed be an uplift over there, a facelift up there in that area. And so in saying that, I'm always going to be very, I always scrutinize a lot of people that come. But one thing that I can see in this of a nine million dollar project, and I just tell residents that I'm comfortable with this situation, and I'll tell you why, is that if you take a drive over there behind Station Two, it is totally undeveloped. Something does need to go there. They have a map that shows in layout how everything is going to be over there. The impact in the swell when it comes to the water, I like. As a matter of fact, nobody came to us with such, especially considering how aqua is, no one came to us with such idea of the water management. So in saying that, on a project, coming over there, I'm gonna be honest, my mind is already made up. I just wish this was in our board packet, so it would not have to be towards general comments on a board meeting that I honestly thought was going to be no more than an hour tonight. You know, because it was two items and bills to play, but I agree, you know, we spent an hour on bills payable, hour on things that we shouldn't, but my mind is made up, and this place being built for those residents, if you're wondering about the tax dollars, this is another company that is bringing us nine, that's investing nine million dollars in an area and pay taxes to the residents of University Park. And if they hire indeed, hire employees from University Park, that's also beneficial for us. So I thank you for coming up, because most people will walk out, but I'm glad you did come up and then say, is it something you need? And this is exactly what we needed, and most of the time, it's in our packet. But for whatever reason, they didn't give it to the clerk, and the clerk couldn't give it to us. I'm sorry, you know? And you also was kind of misled when you was told you couldn't have it. So I yield my time.
Any other questions of the council? Thank you, Trustee Brooks.
No, I just want to say I apologize too, and I know I served on the Planning Commission, and usually when things go through them, they've already made it airtight. So I usually vote yes every time that it's gone to the Planning Commission. I appreciate your patience and staying so long.
Okay, any other questions of the council? If not, can I have a motion and a second roll call, and let's continue moving the community forward?
We've got it. Just a roll call.
Okay, just a roll call? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye, for God's sake.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulter.
I'm staying.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye for economic development.
Trustee Root is. I'm sorry, Mayor Root is.
I'm gonna take my time and respond now.
I know you're gonna concur, right?
Yeah. Vote aye, Madam Clerk, and thank you to City Council. Thank you, Trustee Jenkins-Bell, for the motion to reconsider. It's all in the efforts in moving our community forward. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience, Altech.
I just want the record to be clear, I'm sorry, just because there was so much going on, Mayor and Madam Clerk and trustees, that that last motion was accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation for Altech's petition for variance.
Right, right, that's what happened.
Yes.
Was it approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other general public comments?
Yes, sir. I've got Ms. Millie and Mary Trust, and Mrs. Trust.
Mildred Morgan?
Yes, this is Mildred Morgan, Ms. Millie, commonly known as, okay, take care. Mayor, even though we still have guests, I still must be blunt but honest. You are a habitual liar. I do not like, and I'm here to tell you, you cannot threaten me with your texts, send me a text lying on me and saying that I'm stalking you. If I was to stalk you, I will let everybody in this village know that I'm stalking your butt, but you're a liar. And then for you to go on, a week later, and I'm sitting on Santa Drive, and I'm watching how my tax dollars are being spent, and you send the police over there, two of them, over to make me leave. Okay, we had a conversation, I left, and it was no problem, but that wasn't good enough for you. That was not good enough for you. The next day, you send a policeman over to my home with a ticket, to give me a ticket. You are rotten, and I do not like the way you run this village. I want to further go on to say that I do not like the way you run this village, because there's roads and streets that is owned by this village, and you're not taking care of them. You have prominent people that live on these streets. We're talking about Hamilton slash Hickok. And speaking with Commissioner Deutsch, I learned from that man that that village, that road is University Park, it belongs to U.P. Also, Drolly Road belongs to U.P. Also, Onset, Burnham. So if you think you're doing something by paving Black Hawk, it's very trivial compared to other things that is needed in this village. I've learned from other people, from the Moni municipality, the Moni municipality, that there's motor fuel money that we're receiving. Where is that? You know, you're like a hoochieegee. You make money disappear. I don't understand that. How come I don't see where the roads are being cared for? Our lives are in danger as long as you are in office. And I want to further say, our lives are in danger as long as we have Gina Williams. Gina Williams, you are an embarrassment. It's no, it's not a problem in me.
Your three minutes has expired. Thank you so much for your comments. Mary Trust, next.
That I'm no longer on Nextdoor, that's no problem. But the way you go about stopping us from talking to each other, communicating, you are the worst, Trustee.
Mary Trust, please.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I gotta speak a little louder. Okay, it's a large room, and I understand that you, I've got to speak a little louder so you can hear me, and I'm standing right here, but we are out here, and I'm projecting, my voice is being projected here to you. And if you can't hear me as well, think about us, do you understand? We are here for a reason. I could be home watching, what is it, FBI or whatever, or talking to my grandchildren, but I'm here because I care about where I live. And when you present this, you got to think about if you were the parent. It's like, these people didn't go through a presentation here, and there are procedures in this town, I know as much about these procedures as you do. These people in this town are not crazy, they know about this, they know what the Planning Commission is like. But if you all didn't understand, and if you were confused, can you think how confused I am? So think about that. You are here, you are here to put this and make it together, and you are like kneading dough to make it seem like it's okay to put in there and bake it, but you have got to think about who's going to eat the bread, and who, that's us, the taxpayers. And if you don't know, I don't know. And giving people something overnight to read, you may have been out of town or whatever, in short periods of time is not kosher. It's not good. It's not good leadership. It's not good leadership. And expecting them to make a decision on something as important as this, nobody wants economic development any more than I do. I would just have a discussion with someone how we have not had any good economic development in years, and I've been here for way over fifty years. It's disgusting. It's going down instead of up. So stop disrespecting the people that put you here, because you're only making yourself look bad. I want my daughter to get the best thing going. So think about that. You don't want to marry her off to anybody, and you won't have any and everybody coming around your house. Because I know old man Trust didn't have it. So think about it, people, I'm not trying to be rude, but I'm just confused, and I paid my taxes, and what's that bell ringing? Okay. Well, it's time to go, it's time for me to go home too. I'm happy they stayed. Y'all can go home too now, I guess.
That's it. That's it. That was it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for the public comments. I'm gonna reserve my board report for later day, I'll post it on the internet. Does any of the council members have board reports? It's challenging coming from the Flintstones to the Jetson, but it must be done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a short report, if that's okay.
That's fine.
It's gonna be short, I'm going to reserve most of this for later, but I must, oh, okay. But I just wanted to report, and I think I put this in the agenda packet, but in case I didn't, I wanted to share this from the IIMC, which is the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I received a recognition for thirty years of membership and service with that organization.
Congratulations.
And if I could just read what it said, this is from the president of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Dear Dorothy R. Jones, IIMC, this year you have reached a milestone. You are celebrating thirty years of membership with IIMC. Membership is the lifeblood of our great association. Without you, we could not exist or do the things that we do. Because of this, I would like to thank you and extend our sincere congratulations for being a member of IIMC for thirty years. Your long-term membership with IIMC is truly an accomplishment and testament of your pursuit of lifelong learning and commitment to the municipal clerk community. We hope that your association with IIMC has been enjoyable, and that you will continue to belong and make IIMC the great organization it is. And that's signed by the president of the International Institute, Lisa Garcia. On another note, thank you, on another note, I reached another milestone, something that's not been reached by any other employee or elected official in this great village of University Park. I celebrate forty years of service to this community as.
It's, it's, it's truly an honor. It's also a challenge. And right now, I'm being challenged. But I am going to discuss this with my board. One of the major challenges that I'm facing, with all of the pleasure, it doesn't have to be this way. Forty years with this village. When I started here in 1985, this village, every employee of this village received paid health care. For 40 years, I have received it. But I also received a letter that affected July 31st. This village would be canceling my health insurance. It's a tragedy to me and I could not keep this to myself. Same as I could not keep my accomplishments to myself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does anybody else have any reports? Chief Chris Neva, anybody have reports of any other officers tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Chief Mitchell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Village Board and our residents just got a couple of other things that we want to talk about. The University Park Police Department responded in June to 860 calls for service. And again, I would like to let everybody know, please slow down and use both ways when we come into intersections and drive safely. We responded to 20, 25 accidents, five verified. Also in June, we responded to only four shots fired calls. I think that's an improvement over this time last year and the years before that. The police department has taken possession of a new radar trailer and two radar signs, like you see in other communities, where the speed of the motorists will be displayed on a pole. Locations of where we're going to place the signs will be discussed at a later date. And a new radar trailer that will also do traffic studies for us. So I think that's, that's a very big thing. The police department has continued to-
Okay. And-
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm just, not to interrupt you. I just was looking over my notes. It seems like, after you get finished, it seems like everybody else has emailed their reports to the board. So after you will be done with that, the elected officials have their say.
Yes, sir. So, well, I'll make this brief. So coming up, August 5th, we will have our 2025 rendition of National Night Out. We're partnering with Moni, the Will County Forest Reserve Police Department, Moni Police Department and Creek Police Department. Where we have our National Night Out at the Moni Reservoir. That's located at 27341 South Ridgeland Avenue in Moni. So let's, let's come on out, let's show the community and the world that University Park and these communities in this area stand strong against crime. That ends my report.
Mister, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the council members have any reports or anything to say tonight?
I have. This is trustee Gina Williams. And we've been waiting for the TAP report, which I do have. 258 people that applied. There were 30 people that did not comply with the orders that were given them. So unfortunately, they got, they weren't able to be in compliance with the program. Either they weren't at home when the technicians came out or didn't answer their phone or an email. So for that reason, they were not able to continue the process with them. 258. 30 people were not compliant. They're still processing people for the pipes. What happened is a gentleman reported that he was not compliant and he called me. So I contacted Aqua. They began to deliver water to his home until they could get the pipe replaced. But then he had a problem with Calumet Plumbing because they were giving him the runaround. And I had to speak to a manager over there. So they came out that Monday, I believe, to assess everything. Here's the problem. The unit that he's in on Sunset Court houses other units in it. It's Monterey Village, I believe. So with that being said, if his water is bad and the other people in the unit water can't be good because it's all coming from the same structure. So I had to get on the phone with the EPA and report that. And there's quite a few other units over there, probably same problem. So they're going to have to figure it out because I and Mr. Barbara Lieberoff cannot knowingly know that these people are getting bad water and do nothing about it, whether they apply for TAP or not. So I'm still pushing for that. I'm still going to make sure that each one of those units get checked properly and that they get their water checked. I've already had kits delivered to me for some of the people in Thornwood who reached out to me. And they're still having problems with their skin. This trustee Sonia Jenkins went over there with me. Those people have rashes and things and they are having film left on their dishes after they washed them. So we're going to make sure that that gets taken care of. I just want to say, I'm really, really fed up with a lot of things. The division that appears to be here, it really is upsetting because I know what I do and then I get blamed or tried to be shamed for something that I didn't even have control over. If there is a water main break, then call everyone. Sound the alarm. I'm one person. There's, how many of us up here? Seven board members and the mayor included. And all of us can do something. When we hear, years ago, Ms. Millie called me about a year ago, letting me know about a water main break from Black Hawk to Hickok, no, to Burnham, to Sandra. I called. I made sure that I sound the alarm. So I'm not just sitting here not doing anything. But I don't want to hear people get up, make movies or whatever you want to call it, and try to persecute me because I know I'm taking care of business. And I don't like that when I get, when I get information that's incorrect and I'm doing my job. I'm making sure that I'm doing it on a regular base. So I want to make sure that that's noted. I will give an update once we find out what we're going to do with them people in that Sunset Court over there, how we're going to solve that. And I will continue to work for my community. Thank you.
Trustee, trustee-
Thank you, trustee. Is there any other trustee-
Trustee Williams?
Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams. Trustee-
Trustee, trustee Williams, did they say so far how many pad their pipes replaced? Do you know that?
At this time, it's eight that hasn't been replaced. It's a slow process. But so far, it has been eight. And like I said-
Do you know if they're all in like one location?
No, we all the different. Know that it's eight so far that's getting replaced or has been replaced. And I will get, keep giving you all updates on that as I follow through with it. In fact, I was on the phone with the mayor when Barbara called and I had to switch phones and he said, oh, tell her hi. So like I say, I talk to these people on a regular base. So I'm making sure.
Okay. If you're able to get the like addresses of the eight?
Oh, well, I mean, if she, if she will give me that, and I don't know if I can leak that to everyone. But I know that that particular address was because that gentleman was having a hard time getting them to come out and fix the pipe. So I ended up getting him water delivered. They gave him six weeks of water at one time until they can get this straightened out. Because what they're going to have to do, they're going to have to shut off the water for the whole entire building until they can fix that one person's pipe. But if we can get everybody in there fixed, that would be a good thing. So that's my aim. That's my goal.
Okay, yeah, if you're just able to get, just to see if it's all centralized in like one location or if it's in different areas. So if you're able to get that, that'd be good.
Not a problem, thank you.
Call me tomorrow when you get a break tomorrow.
And one more thing, condolences to Sandra Devance, who's been a, worked for our village for years and lives out here. She lost her mom, what, maybe a week or two ago? But she contacted me and let me know. So she used to be part of Parks and Recs for the Aqua Center. And she lives over there by you, Dee, and the Vista. She's a very beautiful person. So she lost her, her mother, condolences to her. And congratulations, Dee.
Any other comments?
Just one, I'd like to offer my condolences to the Mitchell and Halliburton family. Darlene Halliburton passed away. Her services were last week. A lot of you might not know her, but she was one of the original coordinators for our cheerleaders here in University Park. And she was the mother of Joshua and, what's this? Two of Brenda Mitchell, our former trustees, grand, or grandson. She had two sons by them. So my condolences go out to the Mitchell Hill and Halliburton family. I happen to have known Darlene before we had a field or place to play. She too was out there working with our kids.
Oh, and one more person, the young man, Israel Dixon. I believe he is the son of Anna Santiago and Paul Dixon. And he lost his life. So prayers to the family for their loss.
I wanted to take the time to say congratulations to our clerk, Ms. Dee Jones. When I moved into University Park and I first started coming into the meeting, she would sit right here on the end of this corner. And I used to always say, who is that? Because she would walk in, she would be sharp, nicely dressed. And I'm like, oh, she got it going on. I was just like, oh, wow. And to sit here and listen to what she's just said to us, I am speechless. We have someone that's been in this community, that has worked for our community for 40 years. That's a long time. We had a little baby that didn't even live to see the number 40. And we are considering taking her health insurance. Unthinkable, egregious, and not called for. This is something that will not happen. We have to come together and do something. If you don't take care of your seniors, you don't take care, you don't love your community. So a board that will sit here and do nothing is not a board that needs to serve any individual in University Park. That's almost half of her life. And then not only that, we have history here in this village. It's a small village. It's eclectic. It has a lot of history. Everyone's done things. And just to talk to them and hear about everything that has happened and the fights that they've had to fight to get us where we are today is something that we need to remember, take into consideration, and always do the right thing. And thank you guys for listening and condolences to the families that have lost their loved ones and the children. The baby that he played, I, I know exactly who he is. He's just a beautiful young, young guy, just handsome as can be. It's, it's just unreal. And this is what is taking place in our community and, and within our walls, what's going on. Now, sitting as the finance chair, it's my fiduciary responsibility to watch along with my colleagues the purse of the village of University Park. So when I see things on Bill's payroll that I want to question, I should have that right to question the things that I see on Bill's payroll without any pushback because I don't push back with any of the other, my other colleagues on this board. And I understand that, you know, they are legislative attorneys. But I do have a lot of questions in what they are actually doing because I haven't seen it. Now, the last invoices that I did see were in reference to personnel. Now, either you're legislative or you're a personnel attorney. They've not reached out to me. They've not contacted me. Susan Mendoza has contacted me and congratulated me. I don't know their contact information and they should have made an effort. None of this is personal. This is business. It's business. It's not my attorney and I feel it's this in this way. If they represent three of us, they need to pay them. That's what I feel. And that is how I'm going to conclude tonight. And you guys have a safe and rest, safe rest of the month. And I'll see you guys at the end of August. Thank you. And don't forget to come out to our back to school parade. It's going to be a blast, a blast from the past. August 16th. Thank you.
On the executive session to discuss the settlement offer, I don't know whose.
Are those all the trustee comments or do we have more? My question is, Felicia, do we have an executive session regarding litigation?
I, I do, yeah, I, thanks, Madam Clerk. I just looked at the, at the agenda and I saw that it says settlement. I don't, however, I wasn't asked to specifically discuss anything at the board meeting, so I apologize if, yeah, I don't. I don't know of anything. And it wasn't, there's no action that would end up, I mean, you could talk about it, but there's no action after the executive session, so you wouldn't be able to take any action anyway. So I don't know.
All right. Are there any more comments?
Trustee Thompson, I think, has something.
Not comments, but I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation and personnel.
And absolutely not. I'm not going there. There's a motion and a second by trustee Thompson.
Oh, I didn't hear. I heard.
Absolutely not. No, no, okay. We're going, we're going to do a roll call. I'm not going to probably be able to hang around for an executive session, but we'll see. But I don't think so. It's nothing that's pending. I know we don't have any pending litigation going on. So, all right.
Okay. Trust, trustee Lewis?
Both know.
Trustee Williams?
Both know.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell? Trustee Folcher?
Both eye.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Thompson?
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks? Mayor Rudis?
And this is to go into executive session? Is there, is there pending litigation that we should be aware of?
Litigation and personnel.
I'm voting no, absolutely not. I'm preparing myself for upcoming surgery, absolutely not.
Okay, uh the motion did pass to go into executive session.
All right. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn and go into an executive session?
We can't.
It passed.
Okay.
So we just wait for everyone to
All right.
But we don't have anything to report out, right? Probably not.